All right, thank you. Okay, we are here on Tuesday, January 23rd at 12:32 for a special meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. We have one agenda item, which is discussion and consideration of bids for an accounting firm to provide professional services for assistance with the annual audit and other accounting services for Lake County government. Tim, are you gonna drive?
Yes.
Yeah. I will hand it.
Thank you, Commissioners. Do you know if Commissioner Marcel is joining?
Just, I just let her in with Janine.
Oh, perfect.
Connected to audio.
Sweet. You could go to the next slide, please, Commissioner. So as you may recall, we put out an RFP for one-time external accounting services, really to help improve where we're at in the finance office. You know, some of these things have been identified in the past. Some of these things have been identified with our new Deputy Finance Director and just a goal of improving how everything is done in terms of the finance office. So these were kind of the key areas that the RFP would touch on. And, you know, obviously, the glaring one that we do need help with is we've been late on our audit for the past two years. You know, other areas, you know, that lead to the audit being late are some of the bullets below that. I'll let you, you know, think through those and read those. We're also, you know, as we have Catherine on board as our grants administrator, really trying to streamline our grants process and that revenue and expense tracking there for grants, because the feds don't like when their money co-mingles with others. So just things that, things that we need to be aware of and we can build better processes for. So you could go to the next slide and feel free, if you have any questions, please ask.
Can I ask one quick question on the liability accounts, three years outstanding? Can you say a little bit more about what that is? Or what the, what's?
These are, so these liability accounts that I know are about three years outstanding are related to payroll and healthcare liabilities. It's about the time that we implemented in code. And so something happened with payroll where, because it's so difficult to pull the right reports, I just feel like there wasn't a lot of time with previous leadership in reconciling the liabilities with the implementation of in code during the pandemic. I did some rabbit hole work for DHS. They had me look into about a 53K variance to what they had tied up to the Treasury Department. And that's what started my dive down that rabbit hole into liability accounts. And I identified that anything that is related to payroll for especially healthcare has not been reconciled in three years.
So is it, so it's not just like liability of unpaid vacation? It's actually like some, perhaps mispayment on actual payroll?
It's payroll related in general. I think some of the Board of Commissioners have seen letters from the IRS where our quarterly taxes were wrong for payroll in the first quarter of 2023. And that's just the, that's just one piece of it. We now know that a county employee had double state tax withholding from her checks. And because those liabilities aren't being reconciled with payroll, no one's catching it. So it's just been an ongoing kind of domino effect, if you will.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Next slide, please.
After this one?
Oh, sorry, nope, that's the one.
Okay.
So just, you know, as a refresher, right, we worked through the RFP with the Board of County Commissioners. We had input from CBS Accounting, Dallas Human Services Finance, then of course, Chris and I reviewed that. We were able to post that on mid-December and we got our, all the proposals in on January 19th. We did have really good response rate, which we were a little nervous about, thinking that everybody's dance cards might be full already for '24, especially in terms of, you know, development of working papers or, you know, kind of creating audit work papers for us. What was nice in response from all of the firms is that, you know, kind of like a lot of things, you know, sometimes it's been a nice surprise to know that Lake County's not alone. So it's really common for counties, especially post-pandemic, to be kind of going through these needs or growing pains, however you want to view it. You know, transitioning staff, new software, all of the things combined in. But each proposal had that and then, you know, gave examples of counties that they have worked with. Let's see, next slide, please. So these are the firms that did respond. There's a good swath of government service and then including Colorado County experience, because Colorado counties are very unique in the way the Treasurer's Office is set up and then county finances are handled. So these are just the, the big firms and some of the smaller ones that were able to respond to the bid. Next slide. We had a RFP team that reviewed each bid and then did a scoring on that. So we had Deputy Finance Director, Budget and Policy, our accountant, DHS, and then Deputy Treasurer. All reviewed all the bids and provided feedback on those in a standardized form. Below there, the, you know, the, the key areas that they looked at or the scores that the criteria was from. And there you go. So top three proposals being from Barry Dunn, Eve Bailey, and BDO. And the team recommends Barry Dunn for that. And it was nice, too, because Jessa and some of the team were able to have pre-application meetings with each of the candidates and actually, you know, ask a lot of questions. They could understand where Lake County was at a lot better. And then also a big part for Barry Dunn is like when this project could be completed. And then Eve Bailey and BDO as runner-ups. Next slide, please. So here, you will see the rankings and where they are at based on the team's feedback. And also a little bit of sticker shock on the price. However, you know, for one-time price of the 212K, should you wish to move forward with the Barry Dunn proposal, is it really fixing a lot of these issues, but also having that succession planning? So whoever is next in finance or the Treasurer's Office or in DHS has those working papers and knows how those thing, knows how things are done. So they can come into, come into a well-defined and structured job and instead of, you know, building it for themselves, which is nothing wrong with, but it's nice sometimes to have a heads up there. Also, you know, kind of thinking through this, this is about, a little more, but about what we've spent on CBS and 3E Leadership Consultants, you know, year to year over the past couple of years. And it's also just a, like I said, it's a one-time expense. It will help us tremendously. And yeah, from there, we can turn it over to questions. If you want to leave this slide up or if you want to go to the next slide, up to you. The next slide's just a Q and A slide.
Okay. Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
I had one question on the Barry Dunn proposal. Just, I know, I think the answer is yes, because you're recommending it, but is that 8/31 deadline? How does that sit? Is that like a little worryingly late or that just is what it is?
So because we're suffer behind with our annual audits, as you know, we're still not done with '22. And we are still trying to wrap up '23, but we can't even start '23 until we have ending numbers from '22 to start our '23 beginning numbers. When I had the pre-screening application interviews, which were all through teams with the exception of BDO and Plant Moran, they were over the phone. Everybody else was through a teams meeting. Every single one of them asked the same questions. We pretty much had the same verbatim conversation. Barry Dunn was the group that, they were, they were the ones that mentioned the statutory deadline of 7/31 and how they didn't think that they would be able to meet that deadline. It is unreasonable, considering how far behind we are, that we would meet that 7/30 deadline. And that's what I've mentioned to Tim as well, is that that's unacceptable to me. I want to get us to the point where we are meeting Tim's goal of the May 30th deadline, which is his birthday. Because if we can meet that deadline, it gives the auditors the opportunity to go through the work papers and get the audit done by July 31st. And if we go past that July 31st deadline, which is a 60-day extension, is September 30th. That is the final deadline before state funds are froze. So every proposal, every firm acknowledged that. But Barry Dunn was the one that came in and not only did they project their total hourly rate, but their estimated project cost and then their estimated completion.
Okay.
And in regards to that, the scoring on the audit experience, is that, I mean, is that a, from 16 to 29? Is that just, what, what, what was, what caused that? And it doesn't seem to cause. Government audit experience across?
This is a consolidated rate sheet that I took from everyone that did the rating. So it was myself, Vice Leverin, Stephanie McBride, Janine McGee, and Deidra Romero. And I basically took all of their rates and consolidated into this one as a final consolidated rate sheet. So the reason there's some differences is because some people liked one firm more than the other.
Right.
But as you can see, Barry Dunn led the team or led the group, where everybody else kind of scattered away at that 1/30 range.
Kayla, did you have any questions or comments?
No, I think it, it looks pretty straightforward from what I looked through this morning in the packet and the slideshow. So I don't have any questions at this point.
Sarah, you have any?
I don't think I have anything else. I mean, just like everything, including the work product and the SOPs, that's all meeting that August 31st deadline?
Correct.
Or is there some flexibility should we run into audit issues that?
So each firm has concerns over the 2022 audit where they, they would like to know where we're at. Some of the firms, including Eve Bailey and Barry Dunn and Plant Moran and even BDO, have also offered to assist with the '22 audit to get us caught up in order for them to start the project if they were the firm selected. Because again, they, they really can't work with '23 numbers until we have the audit wrapped up for '22. So that is their, their going concern is that, you know, '22 is not done and how are we going to get that completed prior to this project? Because the '22 audit is really, as you know, our pain point right now. It would be really nice to wrap that up. I have been diligent in responding to the auditors when they're asking for document requests. As soon as I get an email from them, I reach out to all the players that, that like pertain to that email. A lot of the hiccup, as you know, is, that's holding us up is the grant documentation that we just do not have a solid system for. However, that first slide, that, that implementation of the 2024 grant and revenue tracking is something that I actually started on January 1st. It's completely different than how we've done it in the past and it starts with our daily cash receipt tracking. And so it's, it's, it's in its infancy. It has not been tested. It's going to be some trial error on my part. But what this is going to do is it's going to force the document retention in the finance office. So when we do see grant coming in, even if it's $200 in grant funds, it forces that communication from the finance department to the other department to say, we need your grant agreement and the VOCC approval for this. And then on the flip side, it's also going to have us track our expenses for AP and payroll on a weekly basis. And so that's going to be able to tie up our expenses for grants, too, which will really assist Catherine in what she's doing.
Well, and vice versa, like I'm working on, you know, having this all in a database so that, you know, all of the grant documentation and the numbers and reports, if they're happening and when they're happening in the timeline and everything, reimbursements, everything will be in a place where it's accessible eventually. So, you know, and that would be working with, part of that is connecting it with finance so that things are coded properly and we don't get like a check and have the Treasury be like, hey, where'd this come from? Or what's this for? So, you know, also a work in progress, though.
Jessa, you said that the, this doesn't include wrapping up the 2022. And I guess I was presuming that that would be necessary for this?
So all of them have stated that they can do the '23 end-of-year audit prep, do all of the month-end work papers that are currently non-existent, get the liabilities completely reconciled and back up to date. This is the price Cherry Bacart, Barry Dunn, and BDO have estimated that. Each firm has offered to assist with the '22 audit. Not that that's necessarily in that estimated project cost. So that's kind of what's holding everybody up is, are they going to be needing to assist with the '22 audit? If so, then there needs to be some level room in there. I Bailey, I will say, if you've noticed, they are a firm that failed to list their estimated project cost and project completion. So they got a zero. And if you see there, number two still even getting a zero for project completion and project cost. In their proposal for cost, they stated that they did a similar engagement for a similar firm with under $50,000. They are, they lead the, the pack when it comes to this particular government service. They have a separate government contract service that makes up their umbrella, if you will, that this is all they do. They come in and assist government agencies in getting caught up with their finance department and their accounting.
So using the 50,000, under 50,000 would just be for the 2022 assistance?
It would be for the entire proposal. They feel like, they, they didn't want to list it as a true project cost, but they said they had done one similar to what we're needing and under 50,000. But they didn't want to list that as a project cost. So that's why they got zero.
But where does the 249 come from?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. That's what I was going to ask. Where did the estimated project cost come from?
The, the blue asterisks for Plant Moran, I Bailey, and DMC, they are the three firms that did not list project cost or estimated project completion. Project cost, they did not complete because that's not what their internal firm policies, they, they don't bid that way, which kind of speaks for themselves because I Bailey leads the pack in a lot of audits. They have over 1,500 government clients and they still get bids and win bids by not even putting out project costs. So that kind of shows you, I mean, like I said, they were number two without even putting a project cost out there.
But where did the number 249?
Those are finance estimates based off of their hourly rate. But they, they did provide an hourly rate. So that's based on what the other firms submitted for project completion and their hourly rate. They did, every firm did list an hourly rate, so they did do that. Some firms failed to list what person would be doing the majority of their work. So a lot of the times, the senior accountants are the ones, or the junior accountants are the ones doing the work. And so Barry Dunn really did a really great job of doing an average rate based on the number of people that would be doing the project. And I double-checked their math and it was accurate.
So they're, just so I make sure I'm understanding, at some point in the interviews, I Bailey said that they could do the whole project for 50,000 or less?
That was after they submitted their bid. And I asked them, I said, I see that you said that you've done a similar project for under 50,000. And I said, why didn't you guys list that as your bid? He goes, that's not within our internal firm policies. We don't submit a bid cost. We just put that in there that we have completed a similar project with a similar entity for under a $50,000 max budget limit, is how they worded it.
Okay.
But because they didn't put that on the project cost, I couldn't list that.
Right.
So I have two questions.
Obviously, no guarantee of that if they're just saying that.
Right.
Not part of the bid, so you can't. It sounds like marketing to me.
Right.
Yeah, and I was wondering if I Bailey would, I mean, is there like, I mean, how do you actually write the contract? Is there a not-to-exceed provision in their contract then?
They said if they, if we went with them, what they said is they would work with our contracting company, which would be Chris, and negotiating the actual project cost at that point. Where Barry Dunn, I feel like we wouldn't have to do much work in negotiating. They already presented what they think it would cost.
Yeah. Go ahead, Kayla.
Thanks. Jessa, can you tell us what the hourly rate is that, that you were talking about?
The hourly rate for I Bailey?
For Barry Dunn, please.
Yeah, let me, sorry, it's going to get into my email. I want to say it was 279 off the top of my head. Hang on, I gotta find their bid.
So while you're doing that, sorry if I multitask your brain too much, but like, so, so the I Bailey, like, blue estimate was sort of like maybe some average of the estimated hours from all the proposals multiplied by their hourly rate?
Correct. That is exactly how we did it.
Okay, so if they're experienced enough that they do fewer hours, then?
And they also have more people assigned, if you notice that.
Yeah.
So they lead the pack in that. And that's typical, I have experienced with I Bailey. Their teams are usually pretty large, which is also how they win bids without putting a project cost out there.
There's something to be said for that. It's kind of like, with like legal services, you can engage an attorney with 30 years' experience for maybe a higher hourly rate, but knowing that it's going to take them half the time to somebody with two to three years' experience to do the same work.
Kayla, to answer your question, Barry Dunn's hourly rate is, their average hourly rate is 273. And that's the math that I double-checked and it was correct. And that's based off of percentage of time each person that would be assigned would work on the engagement, which their junior accountant, 80% of their work would be done by their junior accountant, who's also a CBA.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I'm, I'm curious on thoughts from Sarah and Kayla, but I mean, to, just reflecting on what you said, Jessa, and the fact that I Bailey gets such a high score, having gotten zero in two big categories is mulling that in my brain. I, I like the idea of hiring a firm with such great references and experience in this particular issue we're facing. And well, I'd be curious on Sarah and Kayla, but also Steph, something about how, how much of a hassle or risk is it to sort of execute that contract, you know, with, with, that's not a fixed cost contract or?
Well, and I think you could, and I don't know if it's part of the discussion that, that the budget for this is not to exceed a certain amount.
Yeah.
And go back to them and say, you know, to ask them to flesh out their proposals, to say that this is a sticking point, that we, you know, it's hard for us to, to rate you, you know, in comparison to other proposals without this information.
Yeah, I mean, if we could have a not-to-exceed, sorry, if we could have a not-to-exceed that's in the same ballpark as the Barry Dunn and they would accept that, then I'm pretty interested in hiring the more experienced firm.
I would agree with you.
And I Bailey, Scott, who I spoke to, who was the Director for Government Contract Services, did say that they could work a contract within not-to-exceed amount.
Okay.
And that he felt comfortable with doing a similar engagement in a similar entity, that they could get it done potentially for under 50. And I, like I said, I've worked with I Bailey. I have nothing but good things to say about them. So I know that's kind of biased, but it is my experience, so.
I, I would agree. The other thing, too, is I'd hate for us to be in a situation where we're bidding against ourselves. Especially, it'd be nice to go back to them and say, do you have a figure that you would propose for a not-to-exceed?
Yeah.
To see what they come back with before we say, hey, it'll be 212, 213, not-to-exceed. Because they, they will definitely say, yes, we'll take that.
I mean, maybe to throw up for discussion with Sarah and Kayla, and I'd be comfortable giving Steph guidance to go to I Bailey and see if we, if we can get a not-to-exceed that's lower than the Barry Dunn number. I would, I mean, hopefully significantly lower, but like, maybe we can discuss what the opening bid is or let you do that in your open session.
Yeah.
Right, I don't know.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm, I'm good with that. I think, I think just in experience of what, of what you tend to see happen when you don't have good financial work papers and good financial controls is that you either pay for it now or you pay for it later.
Right.
And, and I think, even though these are high, I think what we want to see come out of this really is that continuity and continuation of operations and services as the finance department changes over or as people grow in their positions. And I, I think if we can build a system that's pretty user-friendly and, and easy for us to transition with staff as they move through their, their roles and that we have consistency in financial reporting to maintain our transparency. I just, I don't know that you can put a price on that. That's just my opinion. But, but I'm fine with asking for a not-to-exceed as well. I just, just for whatever it's worth, I'm not super, super sticker shocked because I think you, you get that, that good work product if you pay for it.
And I have emails where Cherry Bacart, Barry Dunn, and BDO were straight across the board with their submittals of their proposals like that. They did a really good job. They didn't have any questions. I did have, I did have to ask questions of I Bailey and DMC just on, you know, what their hourly rate is based off a percentage of who would be doing the work. And Scott was really great at answering my questions. And he did say that whatever max budget limit that we thought we could do, he thought he, they could meet at that.
Say, which one is the cheapest with Cherry Bacart? 150.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a little past the point of having this discussion right now. And if anybody can do their homework, then they can listen to our discussion about costs. But, I mean, I, yeah, you, the 42 points because of the produced project cost and completion dates. If you remove those, I Bailey is on top, right?
Yes, absolutely.
I just wonder more about that completion date. But again, maybe fleshing out my last question is, can we, if there, you know, if we can, if, if we need to focus on that audit piece first to meet that deadline, unless they have the whole team's working on all the, you know, the full scope?
Yeah, time is of the essence. So the more we have to negotiate price, that is obviously going to take up time because Chris is going to have to be involved in negotiating. That means she would be anyways. But on the, on the other side of it, too, is I Bailey, and I know this from personal experience, will only operate within statutory requirements anyways. And they're going to be the ones pushing the GASP standards and pushing Colorado State requirements onto us as well. They'll be the ones mindful to say, you have to have this done by this deadline. You have to have this done this way. So that's where I Bailey also, and I mean, BDO and Plant Moran will be able to do the same thing for you as well. So it's not just I Bailey that's going to be able to say, you know, state statutory requirements is this or your GASP is this. DMC did mention two new GASP's that are going to be hitting our financials for 2023. I can't remember specifically. I think it was GASP 96 and I, I can't remember what the other one was. And so that's crucial to have a really good audit firm to say, are you following these new GASP standards? And so I Bailey with their Government Contract Services, that's literally what they do for their clients is they keep them on top of their GASP standards.
So hearing our conversation, I'm curious what, Jessa, you and Tim would recommend between the two? If we're interested in exploring I Bailey and outside of like, you know, the, the literal rubric?
Outside of the right system, I would say, I, I would have, I would have veered to I Bailey anyways, but that's just because I have really good experience with them at a prior place of employment that I've had. And it was nothing but, I mean, the, the service you got and they were on top of their GASP. If you submitted a work paper, within the next day, they would tell you if there was something wrong with it. That was my experience at that entity. So this would be a whole other team. But outside of this rubric and this grading system, I Bailey is my number one.
And Jessa, they're, they're, they meet the qualifications to conduct the single audit as well, right?
Correct, yes, they do single audits. BDO, I Bailey, Plant Moran, and Barry Dunn have all done single audits in addition to DNC. Cherry Bacart, Cherry Bacart is the one. Cherry Bacart, Cherry Bacart is the one firm that they don't actually consider themselves an audit firm. They, when I had my pre-application screening with them, it was through Teams. They said they found their niche market. They all worked for big, you know, big four audit firms and other big accounting firms. And they found their niche market with government agencies that needed this type of assistance. So they broke out and started their own type of system here. So I don't know that we would be getting the Gatsby standard that we would be getting with your big audit firms like I. Bailey, BDO, and Plant Moran. Including the single audit.
I guess my suggestion, Commissioners, then would be if, you know, Jessa, if you can, this afternoon and tomorrow, follow up with I. Bailey for a not to exceed amount. And then I guess also focusing on that project completion date. And providing us with an update on there, and then we can go with either Barry Dunn or I. Bailey if we get a better, accurate number from them.
So what's the do not exceed?
I would not bid against ourselves.
Yeah.
Let them say, let them propose what it would not exceed based on the scope of the services to be provided.
Okay. I think he may come back and say that they don't do that, like they wait for us to tell them.
Just say if they want to compete for this bid, that that's what we need, the information we need right now.
Okay, can I include you in that email?
Certainly.
Okay. Okay, and then also, Kayla, to also answer your question, in addition, I. Bailey, when I used them at this previous place that I've worked for, they did the single audit for us. And that was a, I think, thirty-two million dollar budget entity, I think. Oh, no, wait, there was no time for that. It was in the hundreds of millions of dollars. Anyways, it was a very large entity and they did our single audit, so.
Ju- just procedurally, Chris, I wonder, since we didn't anticipate having to discuss like a negotiation terms, I'm, I, I'm thinking of two options. We could either, like, the, the more laborious one would be to actually schedule an executive session to discuss like negotiating guidelines that we can do confidentially, or we could authorize the chair to have a discussion with staff. You know, I, I think we had talked about obviously not exceeding the numbers we see on the slide. But we could have that discussion offline. Did they, did both those pathways seem?
I, I think that's fine. You could do either one. You could go on and, and direct staff to negotiate based on the information we have that's been presented.
Yeah.
Okay, the final contract, we'll go back to you anyway.
Um, the difference between Barry Dunn and BDO, BDO estimated it on a monthly basis of how much, how many months they thought it was going to take, where Barry Dunn did it on a weekly basis. So Barry Dunn came out at a twenty-six week range and BDO did it at six months.
Yeah.
Um, I'll move to direct staff and legal as well as giving authority to the board chair to reach back out to I. Bailey and discuss negotiations of a price for the project.
Do not exceed?
No.
I'll second that. If you were then, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just added a little bit there to, for a price.
For a not to exceed price.
For a not to exceed price, rephrase.
Okay, I will second that.
Great. Any further discussion or questions?
Um, no, other than, I guess, was there a timeframe that these proposals were good until? And will we need to look at?
So there was no timeframe on the submitted proposal. I, I do want to say that several of them submitted a discount rate, including Barry Dunn. BDO had a discount rate. Plant Moran was the one where they offered to do five dollars more than their senior accountant's rate across the board. So instead of saying this percentage at this person, it's literally just five dollars more than the person who would be doing the majority of the work all across the board. So there is those caveats. I don't know if that would change. However, whatever I read in there didn't suggest that it would change. However, Cherry Bacart did say that depending on the engagement, if they felt the scope of the work changed, their discount rates could change in the middle of their engagement, which is why I wasn't concerned with their prices.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we'll just get some more information and then come back for another discussion with that.
And, and I guess with the anticipation that, you know, if we go to I. Bailey and they don't want to engage on a not to exceed or whatever, some guidance on whether you want us to proceed with negotiating with Barry Dunn? Or if you still want us to negotiate with I. Bailey? For this?
After we get more information?
Yeah, we, for example, if Jessa goes back and they say, you know, we're, we're, we aren't going to bid against ourselves either kind of thing, and we're not going to give you the, which I don't know if they would at this level, but what was Plan B? So we don't have to come back to you and say, what do you want Plan B to be? So we can like make this more efficient in terms of with the recommendation of this one and go on. Because my anticipation would be the next meeting would be us presenting you with the contract for Barry Dunn.
I mean, for me as one commissioner, I feel like if, I, I think it would be highly irregular that a company would not be willing to put a not to exceed number on a contract. That's sort of unheard of for me. So, but I mean, I guess if they don't, I would, I would say if we can't get under the other qualified, you know, the next qualified firm, Barry Dunn, then we could proceed with Barry Dunn.
Yeah, I, I guess I would agree with that.
Okay, so do not to exceed. And if they say they can't without a written contract, because I think that's where he's going with it.
But I think we, yeah, we would put, yeah, yeah.
We can provide the raw contract for them. We just need to know the not to exceed amount. Okay.
Yeah. And again, I don't want to negotiate with ourselves in open session, like you were saying, but.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so if you can just forward up, maybe, and maybe I haven't, but I don't know that I have the proposal, if you can send me.
I have it all in an email, ready to go, because I wasn't sure if anybody was available on them. So I have them ready to go, so I can send them to anybody that wants to look out.
If you can just send me I. Bailey's, then I can go on and tee up the contract and we can send it back to them and say, all we need is your not to exceed amount.
Okay.
And I'm happy to be in any email or verbal discussion about what, if, 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 if they require us to offer first what that might be.
They were the biggest settlers when it came to the not to exceed amount. And I think it's because they know where they stand in the rate of this.
Do any of these have, like, when they can start type dates?
Uh, Barry Dunn and BDO had start dates, and so did Cherry Bacart. And the three of them are, sorry, no, Cherry Bacart, sorry, I'm getting, sorry. Barry Dunn and BDO were the only ones that listed a start and end date. The rest of them just listed the number of hours that they thought it would take.
Okay, but the, I mean, is there any chance that we say, we want to go with I. Bailey and they're like, okay, we can't start till July?
That could be the concern too.
Well, and that, so that's something else to ask and say, we need a not to exceed date and when they can start.
Yeah.
So I think, yeah, seems like we've run out of discussion. I think the motion on the table still stands. So I'm ready to take a vote on that?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so. Thank you. And yeah, again, feel free to, yeah, loop me in as needed. Thank you. So that is our agenda. Thanks, everyone, for that discussion, a good thorough discussion. So that is our agenda item for this special session, which will adjourn at one eleven P. M. Maybe we can just take a little break. I need to gather some papers for the session agenda, just three.
Hey, Sarah, Jeff, are we hopping back?